Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Jersey City zoning board of adjustment. This is our regularly scheduled meeting for June 24th, 2021. We're coming to you via Zoom in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act of 2020. If you have any questions, Lindsay from staff will will give you a little rundown on how to ask questions and we'll show you kind of what what we're talking about today when we run through the agenda. But let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible. And justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Any sunshine announcements?
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this hearing was given to the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the clerk on on June 22nd, 2021, and we have the notices to be marked.
Okay.
And that would be the one in evidence for tonight.
Thank you, Bridgette. Well, can you take roll call, please?
Okay. Who do we have? Okay, Commissioner Patel.
Yeah, here.
Commissioner Rujo.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner McCormick.
Presidente.
Commissioner Shadid.
Here.
Vice Chair Donnelly. Oh, Commissioner, Vice Chair, you're on mute.
Here.
Thank you. And Chairman Jacobs.
Here.
All right, so we have seven present.
Do we? One, two.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
I know. It looks like there are very few people on the screen because it's just Cam and I.
Yeah, no, I apologize. I thought there were six. So, okay, can you swear in staff, please, Bridgette, whenever you're ready?
Okay, sorry. Do you swear or affirm the testimony or comments you're about to give in this proceeding tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any correspondence?
No correspondence about the cases on tonight. We do have a number of items carried. Just from the top, the only cases going forward tonight are the amendment for 144 Bergen and the site plan and variance approval for 152 Stevens. I'll put all that in the chat as well. Based on the number of attendees, we only have 13 people. So I think the people are aware that most things were carried, but I'm gonna go through it.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful if you just bring that up.
Yeah, of course.
So that will be just 11 and 14 on the agenda?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Benny. Okay, so other than the items listed under adjournments, item nine, the appeal for 303 to 311 First Street will be carried to the July 8th regular meeting with preservation of notice. Same for item 10. That's KC 2077 for 163 to 165 Delaware. That's carried to the next meeting. However, I believe they may be renoticing, but since I'm not 100% sure, we're gonna carry that to the July 8th regular meeting with preservation of notice. Item 11 is going forward. That's 144 Bergen. We will hear that tonight. Item 12, KZ 20102, address 129 Linden. That is carried not to the next meeting, but to the July 22nd regular meeting with preservation of notice. They'll be meeting with a community group in the meantime. So if anyone's here for that, feel free to reach out to our office if you want to attend that meeting. Item 13, that's KZ 2047. That's 286 Arlington Ave. It's the amendment for that address that is carried to the July 8th regular meeting with preservation of notice. Item 14 is going forward tonight. That's 152 Stevens Ave. And the next three items, 15, 16, and 17, all for 21 and 23 Highland Avenue, both the subdivision and the site plan with variance applications for for 21 to 23 Highland. That those cases will be carried to the July 8th regular meeting with preservation of notice. So again, the only thing we're hearing tonight is 152 Stevens and 144 Bergen.
Yeah.
Anyone? Anyone have any questions? All right.
I don't think so, but thank you very much for Lindsay for going through that. I don't know if you've promoted Mr. Lean or or Mr. Harrington, whoever is is on for that case, but I think we can proceed with case Z 21 dash 010. The address is 144 Bergen Avenue.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm glad I got myself together pretty quickly here because I didn't expect I was gonna be the first up. Tonight is a very simple amendment. This is for 144 Bergen. It's obviously a notice case. I would just ask that Mr. La Paglia confirm he's received my affidavit.
Yes, Tom, we have received them. We we have reviewed them. They are fine. You we have your affidavit of service. You have some proof of publication, and Bridgette will mark that as A1 for this application.
Thank you very much.
That'll be A1 for this application. A1.
And I'm sorry to interject. I think there's a bit of an echo. So when you're not speaking, please mute yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay.
The the case before you this evening has a little bit of a history with this board. It was approved back in 2005 for a 24-unit building with 19 parking spaces, five stories. The variance that was granted by this board and why we're before this board was essentially for density. 22 units were permitted. The board granted 24. Construction essentially commenced. They pulled all their permits, and then the project sat a little empty for a while. Now the developer has actually getting towards the end of building this project. He started up about a year and a half ago. And he's basically back for final amendments to get some of the materials done that he actually wants to put on the building. Changes in windows and most importantly balconies for some of the units on the side of the building. This is essentially just an aesthetic amendment. We're not asking for any new variances. It's just to essentially finish up the project, put on the new materials and get our CEO and close it out. So with that, I have Jeffrey Lewis as our architect who's just gonna run through very minor changes to the project.
Did you raise your hand, Mr. Lewis?
Yep.
Oh, they froze. Your picture froze. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. State and spell your full name for the record.
Yes, it's Jeffrey Lewis, J E F F R E Y L E W I S.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, you did not prepare the plans for this project, but you have reviewed them and you're a licensed architect in the the state of New Jersey?
That's correct, yes.
And your license is current?
Yes, it is.
Okay, if you could just run us through quickly the changes from the original project to what we're proposing to do to finish up the project for right now.
Thanks. We accept this qualification as always.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, so let me get right into my screen sharing here. Oh, can you please allow me to screenshot Lindsay? There we go. Thank you very much. Okay, so I'm starting right on our floor plans. We're making some very minor changes to the floor plan, so I want to start with those. And the main change was we had to add an egress corridor for the building department, and that goes from this first staircase directly to the outside of the building here with a door to the exterior. That's something that was required for building code. So that's the major change. And just one thing I want to know, as a result of that change, this is where we were gonna most likely put our electric and gas meters. So we're going to relocate those, and those will be located over on this wall here. As you can see, what we have is we have a five-foot alley here where we're planting, we have a little lawn area, and we'll put those meters on this wall here. Also, while we were making these changes, you might notice the front of the building is kind of bumping in and out on the ground floor. And so we we got rid of that, and we flattened the front of the building just to straighten it out, bringing it back to this line. So we're actually bringing it back a few feet. As far as the interior layout, we changed the parking layout a little bit. We did not lose any spaces. We made, we added a few things, actually. We were able to, first of all, move the handicap space to be directly next to the main entry and the elevator, which makes a lot more sense. We found a little bit of space for the elevator machine room. And we were also able to add two sections of bicycle parking to provide 12 bicycle parking spaces. When this passed, the ordinance for bike parking hadn't passed yet, so we didn't have any. But now we will, we'll meet the 12 spaces, even though I'm not sure we have to, but it's a good thing to do, and we will do it. Also, it's hard to see on this drawing. It'll be a little clearer once we get to the elevation. But we were a stilted building in the back, and the back of the building was open, and we're proposing to enclose the garage and have an enclosed garage. Moving on to the second floor, again, very minor changes on this floor. Our unit count is the same. Our unit breakdown as far as bedrooms and bathrooms, exactly the same. What we did, again, number one, we removed this bump out. You can see we're straight across here now and adjusted these apartments just a little to to be even. They're each mirroring each other at this point. Some of the layout changed, just a very small bit, like changing doors, very little things. The only other major thing that has changed on this floor on the exterior would be this back area, the roof of the garage. Originally, we were not using it at all, but now we're going to use it for a few things. First of all, we are going to do roof decks for the two back units, and we're setting those roof decks back five feet from each side and five foot from the rear of the building. And then, secondly, we're showing, this is an exhaust fan for our garage because we're enclosing the garage now. We need that exhaust fan just for emergencies in case, not emergencies, but in case CO2 is too high, the exhaust fan comes on. And then, lastly, it's not shown here, but we're gonna actually kind of double the size of this space here because we want to put the the generator that we're going to need for our elevator here as well. It's a very small emergency generator that's just used for the elevator in case of loss of power. It's basically the size of of like a cooler. It's one of those elevators, one of those generators that you see pretty commonly that's on wheels. But it's not on wheels, but it's that size, excuse me. And that would be here, and that runs on natural gas. The third floor, again, is just the same minor changes to the interior of the building, but nothing else. And then there's no changes to the roof. And now we are moving on to the elevation, so I'm gonna zoom in a little bit. On the bottom of the drawing, we're showing what was what was approved before. So you can see previously we were proposing, sorry about that. We're proposing a more traditional building in the front, and then on the rear, we were using the same windows as the front. We are doing a stucco finish on the back. And then you could see how we have the stilted garage with just a just the aluminum fence instead of being enclosed. Now scrolling up to what we're proposing, I'm gonna start with our front elevation, where obviously we're going for a more modern style now. You know, it's like to start from the bottom. We replaced the bottom with some light brown stone panels. The revised entry remains similar with the same black aluminum storefront material.
Could you slow down, please?
Yes, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Repeat that part. The revised entry remains similar. Pick it up from there and please slow down.
Yes, it's a black storefront material. The the new door that I mentioned previously is right here, and it's a solid metal door painted black. The garage door has been changed to be a solid silver gray metal panel door. And then above, moving up, this sign band has been changed, and now it's a slate, it's wrapped in a slate gray metal panels. And it divides the upper and the lower building. So then above, our main finish are these sandstone metal panels. It's a beige-ish color. And then we're using the same slate gray metal panel that we used for the sign band for these 12-inch corner trim boards. And for then this border around the windows, this is a four-inch extruded, it's framed out four inches and wrapped in that same metal panel. What else? Our windows are black aluminum window frames. We have here, we have a four-inch cast fill and four-inch cast stone header, and they're filled in between with a light beige metal panel. I'm sorry, light beige fiber cement panel, excuse me. So those are actually the finishes on the front, sliding over to the rear. We enclosed the garage, as I as I mentioned before, and this will be just a smooth stucco finish on the property line. We changed the building finish to be gray vinyl instead of that stucco and changed the windows to be more residential windows that match the windows on both sides of our building. Now, lastly, I'm gonna go through quickly the sides. You can see we were full stucco for almost all of the building, except at the ground floor, we were proposing to wrap around the stone finish and that the sign band that we had. On the top, we are still wrapping around the stone finish and the sign band. But we're also going to wrap around those slate gray metal panels for the entire front up to back to about 50 feet. And then where we have windows, we're providing accents of that gray vinyl siding. These two inset sections are going to be changed to vinyl siding, the same gray color. And then the elevator stair towers and the first floor, which is located on the property line, will just be finished with a light gray smooth stucco finish. And just looking at the left side elevation, it's exactly the same where we have a small section that wraps around. And again, this wraps back about 50 feet and then gray vinyl and smooth stucco finish painted like gray on the property line. Okay, so those are, that's a summary of the changes we're making. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
Thanks, Jeff. Does anyone have any questions? I guess first I'll ask, Tom, is there any anyone else who's gonna be presenting?
I'm sorry, could you just repeat that? I dropped off for a quick second there.
Sure. I was just gonna ask, is there anyone else who's gonna be presenting? I can't recall, or is Jeff?
No, that's it. My only question for Jeff. Jeff, we're not asking for any additional variances. This doesn't change the bulk. It doesn't increase the intensity of any of the previously obtained variances.
That's all correct, yeah.
Okay, then, no, I have no one else who's gonna testify this evening.
Okay. Does anyone from the board have any questions about the changes in the rendering or anything?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick point of order. I believe Mr. Lean said this application was generally approved on in 2005. Was that a mistake?
If I said 2005, I meant 2015. If I misspoke, I apologize.
That's what I was gonna say, because it's 16 years, even six years, you know, the big difference.
If I if I said 2005, I apologize.
All right, no problem. So 2015, which still gives us six years of playtime here, even with the pandemic. I think that's a little time-wise, I mean, but, okay, thank you.
No, and I and I understand some of the confusion here. I did supply Lindsay with the the permit dates for when they originally pulled. Excavation began. They started to do the foundation, and then my client unfortunately just didn't proceed with the actual structural section of the building. That that does perfect their original approval, but timing-wise, I could understand why that's confusing.
All right, thank you very much. That was my concern. I just make it short. Like I said, 16 years or even six years, it's a little bit of a difference, you know? Long time, and you know, a long time to get these projects taken care of. Thank you.
Um, is there any particular reason why you switch from the more kind of traditional, you know, red brick front to sort of this gray institutional look?
Um, I think really what happened is because we knew we had to come back here, this was an opportunity for for the developer to change styles. And this is something I think he wanted to do. And I'm getting someone maybe telling me something else. Yeah, just that honestly, the this is something that the owner would prefer as he prefers the modern look to the traditional look.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay. Anyone from the public have any questions or comments? Lindsay, do you see anyone? Do you wanna go over what the rules are?
Sure, I don't see any hands raised, but if you did have a question or a comment about this application, this is 144 Bergen. You would click raise hand, or you would dial star nine if you're calling in. Yeah, that's star nine. And so we'll see the user hand raised, and then we'll be able, you'll be able to turn on your camera and audio. And then you're, each person's given three minutes to ask questions, provide comments. But again, I don't see any hands raised at this time.
Okay, well, great. Thank you. Then we'll close the public portion of this application. Staff, anything you wanna say?
No, I don't have anything to add. I think it's it's pretty straightforward request. Yeah, happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for staff or for Mr. Lewis at this time? I mean, if not, does anyone wanna make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for approval on Z 21 dash 010 with any staff conditions that have been implemented.
Begging.
Commissioner Patel? Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Rujo?
I'm muted.
Tony, you're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner McCormick?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Vice Chair Donnelly?
No.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Yes.
The six-four, one opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, may I have just two minutes? I need to get a speaker. I'm having trouble hearing because I'm in a different place.
Yeah, sure. Of course, Bridgette.
Right there. Nobody.
I just want to thank the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Take care.
Lindsay, can you lead me on?
Yep, easier for me.
Thanks.
And I guess while we're getting ready, whoever's presenting for the next case, 152 Stevens, please raise your hand.
Patrick, Colin, and Chuck Harrington. And Manny, I don't know.
No, it's Jeff. He is here. So it's Chuck. Okay.
Chuck, that. And I forget what planner they're using.
Carolyn's here.
Carolyn's waving, raising her hand and waving.
Yeah. I think we're we've got everybody.
Yeah, so Cam or Chuck, is Philip Carrington part of the team?
Not that I can remember, unless it's a historic preservation. That's
Uh, no.
Okay.
Sorry, I could hear you, but I was muted.
No problem. Philip, if you're here, if you're here to comment on the application, we'll get to public comment after after they present.
Just hold on. This is a court. Okay, somebody say something.
No, not relevant.
Can you hear Bridgette? Can you hear us?
Not through the device. I'm, my son and the kids are coming, and I don't wanna, I needed a different place, but I'm by the air conditioning unit, and I didn't realize how noisy it is. All right, hold on a second. Let me just try this again.
Okay, just let us know whenever you can hear us. I mean, I guess if you can't hear us, you won't be able to let us know.
Okay, you still got the over on the on 7:30.
No pressure. So, okay.
We gotta, we gotta wait, Chuck. We gotta wait for Bridgette.
I had to work these things, these speakers. Hold on.
It's okay, everyone. I don't think sunset's till like 8:30, so.
And the Yankee game is over already, so.
Oh, yeah, okay. So no pressure.
Hello, hello, hello.
Bridgette, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are you ready, Bridgette?
Yes, I am. Sorry.
Okay, we're gonna proceed with case Z 21 dash 007. The address is 152 Stevens Avenue.
Okay, for the record, Charles Harrington, Colonel Foley, on behalf of the applicant. This is a notice case, so I'd ask that they be marked into evidence. Yes, Chuck, we looked at your notices, your affidavit, your proof of service, notice of publication. Bridgette, we're gonna mark that as A1 for this application.
Okay, that would be A1 for this matter. A1.
Okay, so the application we're presenting to you tonight is for a use variance for the property at 152 Stevens Avenue. This, it's a unique building and a unique application in that it is a former house of worship with, let's say, the rectory, depending on, you know, what you would call it, or parsonage that was attached for, I guess, the church, you know, officials to live in. And what we're proposing tonight is to convert the church area into an office space. And then the the former rectory, if you will, would be converted into three residential units. We're not knocking anything down. We are restoring the church. If you'll see during the presentation, it's 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 actually pretty neat-looking church. It looks like a little castle, and it's, you know, in the corner there, Stevens and JFK. The Greenville Hospital is right down the road, and this is where Bergen Avenue and JFK kind of merge. So it lots a little over 10,000 square feet. It has existing parking there. We will be reusing that parking for both the office use and and the residential use. I note that the office use then, you know, will be like any other office. They come in in the morning, they leave, you know, at night, so that will not be filled up overnight with with any cars, except for the residents of those three units. So we are, because it is in the R1 zone, we are asking for the use variance. We have been working with the Historic Preservation Officer, Dan Redden, on how to rehabilitate and restore the church where needed. So that has been done hand in hand with him and with planning. I know we've also had a community meeting with us that was facilitated by Councilwoman Ridley. And that, you know, it wasn't really well attended, but I believe the people who showed up, once they heard that nothing was being knocked down, they actually just hung up on us. So I'm assuming that they're okay with the rest of it. But that being said, it really is, I think it's a it's it's a nice project because it's a restoration of the historic church as well as the building, and we're not, we're not taking anything down, and it kind of blends in with the merging of the uses there in that area. So with that said, I'm gonna hand it off to Jeff Lewis is here. He's our architect, and he can take you through the project. Carolyn Wurstel is here as well. We also have our our traffic engineer who's kind of sitting in the bullpen in the event anybody has any traffic questions. With that said, Jeff?
All right. Thank you, sir. Let me start with my screen sharing. And right now, I'm at the the top right corner of my drawings, showing the the photograph of the property that we're talking about.
Jeff? Just to remind you, you're under oath.
Yeah. Yes. This remains under oath. Application, and we continue to accept their qualifications.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm starting at the top right of my drawings, looking at some of the photographs of the existing site. Looking from Stevens Avenue, this is the main church building, the stone building. And then this second building here, which is wood clapboard, is the rectory. They're actually attached to each other. And then looking from JFK, this is that turret at the corner. And this is the main section of the church with the clear story above. This is the section of the that rectory that actually wraps around the back, and we'll see that when we come through. This is the section of the, that rectory that actually wraps around the back, and we'll see that when we come through the floor plans. And this is actually looking at that parking lot that we were discussing. Um, so now I'm going to move on to our site plan. So we're showing the existing site on the left and the proposed site on the right. We're making very few revisions because we are trying to keep as much as we can here. I want to start from the outside of the property, work our way in. So we are replacing the curbs on Stevens Avenue. We haven't, we also have an 18-foot wide curb cut that's existing on Stevens Avenue that we would like to keep and use, continue to use for the parking area. We're replacing the entire sidewalk on Stevens Avenue, as you can see here. The corner is actually fairly new and is in good shape, and the walkway on JFK is actually in pretty good shape as well, so we'll be leaving those. We're also keeping this line of hedges that's along JFK. Then the first change here is we are replacing the existing chain link fence, which right now runs all the way along JFK and then across the front of the property, there's a gate to get into the garage and then a few other gates, one here and then another at the main entry to the rectory. And that's, the detail for the gate is right here. That's a four-foot-high aluminum gate painted black, and we've been working with Historic on details like that. The building itself, we're not, Chuck said we're not demolishing anything. That's not 100% true. There's a little one-story addition that was put on this building a long time ago that is in bad shape and is not really necessary and it's not important to the building that we are going to be demolishing. And we're replacing that with a new wood deck that has steps down to this new concrete patio. Also, if you look on the existing to the left here, we're keeping this platform, which is a secondary entrance to the, what was the church. But we are removing this ramp because this ramp actually is not, does not meet ADA standards. And this was a Bilco door, which goes down to the basement, and we're going to be removing that as well. And looking at the right, we're replacing the ramp with stairs up. We're replacing that Bilco door with stairs that go down into the office at the basement level. And then we're adding a new wheelchair lift to the, to the platform to serve as our ADA access to the, to the office itself. Then we also adjusted the parking area. One thing we did is we're adding, it's a mess right now. It's just, just a random paved area with no lines or borders. We're adding a new six-foot curb around the entire area. We're adding this handicap space, which is directly adjacent to the wheelchair lift, and then 10 new spaces along JFK Boulevard. We also, we're adjusting the lawn here, where we're taking some lawn away from the back area here and then adding more along JFK and then in the front on Stevens Avenue, where it can serve a little bit to better screen the, our parking area. We also have a few entries into the building that I'll just go over here. One is from that deck, is that's a basically a back door to the office. We have that main entry that I just discussed from the parking area. And then we have a second, a second main entry to the office, which is located in the front of the building off of Stevens Avenue. These are the two doors that were the main, original main entrance for the church itself. And then lastly, there's an entry here, which is the main entry for the three residential units to the rectory building. I'm going to move on. Just for lighting, we are proposing two new pole-mounted lights that will be shielded to only light our parking area and then two additional lights that will be mounted on our, actually three, I'm sorry. Three additional lights mounted on our building to, to light the patio and parking area. I'm going to pass these and go right to our floor plan. Okay, so this is the basement plan. On the right, we're showing the existing basement, which is basically mostly just open space with a small bathroom. And then on the left, we're showing what we're proposing. This is going to be an office. This is the lower level of the office. It's a total of 2,807 square feet. And it's made up mostly of a few conference rooms, some storage, a training area, and one, two, three, four bathrooms. Also, down here is the sprinkler room. This is sprinkler for the residential sprinkler. The three apartments are going to be fully sprinkled. And then we actually have three egress points in this basement. The one, as I mentioned before, is directly from the parking area. The second is that main entry for the church on, from Steven Street, these two doors. There's actually, when you come in, there's a stair that goes up to the upper office and down to the lower office, so that connects the two. And then third, we have stairs that continue here and then straight up and will bring you out into the, into the main office space. And I'm actually going to switch to the first floor now, so you can see this is where you come out into that office space. And this space to the left, if you look at the existing, this is the existing church. This is the existing rectory, and I want to, I'm going to go down one sheet to the. Oh, that. So, sorry. So this is the second floor plan. I just want to show you where the actual cathedral space of the church is. As you can see, it's this whole front section here is all, it's really great wooden cathedral ceiling that we're keeping and it's in really good shape. We're just going to repaint it. But you can see the rectory comes around here, so this is only a single height space, looking above at the first floor. If we can just go back there. So that ends about. So all of this is open cathedral space. And all of these dividers for these offices are all just seven-foot-high glass divider spaces, dividers. So all the space is completely open, except in the back here where we have lower ceilings and we have a few extra offices. We have that entry. And in the back here, then we have a little, a small like break room with a small kitchenette and that deck area. Oh, I should mention, I'm sorry, there's about 2,051 square feet in this space. And then that's it for the office space itself. Moving on to the, the residential space, which is completely separated by one-hour fire-rated walls and ceilings. You enter again up this, up the porch of the rectory building and into this hallway. There's one apartment on the first floor of the building. It's a 720-square-foot, two-bedroom, one-bath apartment. It extends basically back to here, straight back. It's, it has washer dryer in the unit and also forced hot air, heat and air conditioning. Then going back to that second floor plan, this is again totally open space. And as you come up the stairs for the residential, we have two apartments up here. They're both two-bedroom, one-bath apartments. The front apartment is 754 square feet and the rear apartment is 779 square feet. Now I'm going to move on to the elevations. Okay, and so, you know, as, as Chuck mentioned, we've been working with the Historic Preservation Office. We've been working with Dan in particular. So I'm going to mention a few things that might be a little different than the drawings, but we've been going back and forth with him on some of the changes that he would like to see here. So starting, obviously, we are trying to restore as much as we can here. We will be complying with all Historic Preservation Office standards for cleaning and for repair. And starting with that, we will be cleaning all of the existing stone. And we'll be cleaning and repairing all of these great decorative windows that are as part of the church structure. And also, we're going to be repairing and in some places replacing when we have to all of the wood clapboard that we're going to see on the rectory and also on the sides of the church building. And also the wood details, such as the detail underneath the roof here of the rectory, all of that is going to be repaired as best possible. And if it needs to be replaced, it will be, be replaced in kind with wood finishes. That said, there are some things that we will be replacing. All the double-hung windows are going to be replaced with new Marvin fiberglass windows. That's also the same case for all the basement windows. We have some new fiberglass Marvin awning windows that we'll be using for those. As far as doors, we're trying to keep as many of the original doors as we can in restoring. The front door to the rectory will be restored. We've spoken with Dan, the two front doors to the original church structure are, are not restorable. So we will be replacing them with new doors and we'll be working with Historic to match them as best as possible. And lastly, the roof, the roof has been patched up a lot, some slate, some other stuff. What we've been asked to do is to remove the entire roof and replace it with just the faux slate shingles. So we're going to be replacing all of the shingles that you see with the new, with new faux slate, faux slate shingles, excuse me. And I'm going to go down. This is the rear elevation and the JFK side elevation. Again, the double-hung windows are being replaced. The clapboard is all being repaired or replaced as needed. The one difference here, these clear story windows, we're going to keep the existing windows that we have, and we are going to do new storm windows on top of them because they need it. And then lastly here, we are, we have the two new porches that, the decks that we're doing, these will be wood decks, wood stairs, and then black aluminum for the railings and for the rails. We can get into a million different details here. We're really working with Historic. But I think the, the main gist of it is we are preserving everything that we can, restoring everything that we can back to what it was originally, and anything that we can't, we're replacing as best we can in kind. With that, I'm going to end my presentation and move on to Carolyn's presentation, if you don't mind, and thank you for taking the time. See you, everybody.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I assume we're going to wait for questions till the end?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Vinny a point of order, please?
Of course.
Yeah, Vinny, just a point of order. Did we agree with Mr. Harrington? Have all his witnesses sworn in remotely? I don't believe we did that before.
I don't believe we did that.
Just to be on the safe side.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Yes, yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to, we're going to move on with Ms. Wurstell.
Would you raise your right hand if you swore? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state and spell your full name for the record, please.
Sure, it's Carolyn Wurstell, C-A-R-O-L-Y-N, Wurstell, W-O-R-S-T-E-L-L.
Thank you.
And Ms. Wurstell has been qualified in the past before this board, so I'd offer again.
Yeah, Carolyn, we accept her qualifications. Thank you.
Great, and I'm. Um, so I guess we'll just get into it. So there are two variances we're here for tonight. The, the main one is the D1 use variance because we are proposing a mixed-use building in the R1 district. In addition, we do have a minor C variance for that existing curb cut and driveway with which we are seeking to preserve. So for that D1 use variance under relevant case law, the Menichee case, the D1 variance can be granted for special reasons where the project site is particularly suitable for the proposed use. This project site is oversized at 10,029 square feet, where 2,500 square feet is the minimum required in the R1 zone for a single fam, or for a one and two-family use. Where this site could potentially have been subdivided into four conforming 2,500-square-foot lots, which would permit up to eight residential units, or potentially developed with senior housing or assisted living facility, because we are at least 10,000 square feet. Instead, this project is proposing to adaptively reuse and restore the existing church structures on the site, which were identified as eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places in the Phase II survey undertaken by the city in the 1980s. With this restoration, we're proposing this office and residential uses that are all integrated into the existing building volume, with those external improvements really limited to the facade restoration, replacement of the ramp on the, the side with the stairs and a lift for ADA, and replacement of that sort of one-story wood frame structure out the rear with a wooden deck. There really are going to be no additional impacts to light or air created by this project because we're completely within the existing building envelope. So that, that's a real benefit here. Additionally, a mixed-use building is really appropriate for this lot. We are a corner lot with front to John Kennedy Boulevard. Kennedy Boulevard south of Bergen Avenue really does contain a mixture of uses, including commercial, multifamily residential, medical and institutional. The adjacent properties to the north of us, there's a 1866 Kennedy, which is a five-story, 22-unit condominium, and 1870 Kennedy Boulevard, which is another five-story, 26-unit condominium. So there are multifamily uses right here on Kennedy. This project itself proposes three units, which will have a density of about 13 dwelling units per acre. So that's, that's really consistent with an R1 district, even though we are a multifamily. Adjacent to the south across Stevens, there are actually several one-story commercial buildings which front on Kennedy. And as I mentioned, there's a number of other institutional uses on Kennedy, including the Earl A. Morgan Branch, the Public Library, PS34 School, and the Jersey City Medical Center at Greenville facility are just located about a block or two blocks south of the site along Kennedy Boulevard. So the site's really appropriate for a mixed use. Additionally, this site does provide 11 off-street parking spaces. The R1 district requires one space per unit on lots over 50 feet wide for residential units, so that would be three units in this case. And additionally, while there are no requirements for office uses in the R1 district, if we look farther south on Kennedy Boulevard, the NC District does have requirements for office, for non-residential uses, which would be one space per 1,000 square feet of non-residential use, excluding the first 5,000. Conservatively, if we look at this as just one space per thousand, we're a little over 5,000 square feet, so we'd be looking at six spaces. So all told, our requirement for parking would be about nine spaces on this site, and we can provide 11. So we, there is enough parking available on this site to accommodate the two proposed uses and the mix of uses. Additionally, there, there was a traffic report prepared by Lee Klein, a traffic engineer, which concluded that the proposed project is not anticipated to have significant impacts on local traffic or parking conditions. And then as mentioned, we are providing new fencing to replace those chain link fences on Kennedy Boulevard and Stevens Avenue. And there will be new sidewalks on Stevens Avenue. So there are some additional improvements around surrounding the, the property to, to integrate it better into the neighborhood. Looking at sort of the positive criteria for that, that variance of the curb cut, there is an existing 18-foot curb cut and driveway that's worth looking to reuse for the parking lot. And again, this is sort of an appropriate width for a mixed use. There will be some larger vehicles potentially using the parking lot than a typical residential use, so that 18 feet is appropriate for a mixed use. Overall, this project really advances that, those purposes of the municipal land use law. The project's maintaining the existing setbacks that'll provide adequate light and air and open space consistent with purpose C. The proposed density of 13 dwelling units per acre will contribute to the well-being of persons in the neighborhood and community consistent with purpose E. We're providing sufficient space for residential and commercial uses and an appropriate location along a mixed-use corridor, consistent with purpose G. And the project will restore as best we can that historic facade and promote a desirable visual environment pursuant to purpose I. And additionally, it promotes conservation of a historic site with, consistent with purpose J. Looking at those negative criteria, the variances will not result in a substantial detriment to the public good or general welfare. We're adaptively reusing a former church with a new mixed-use development and is providing community with some new residential options with the three units that are being proposed. It's proposing a mixed use, it's consistent with uses in the surrounding neighborhood and will complement the, the types of uses that are existing on Kennedy Boulevard and will not have any impacts on light and air as the existing building envelope will be maintained. Adequate parking is provided with those 11 off-street parking spaces. And as mentioned before, the project is not anticipated to have significant impacts on local traffic or parking conditions. The, granted, the variances will not result in a substantial detriment to the intent and purpose of the zone planner zoning ordinance. The project proposes, as I said, it to adapt or reuse a former church with a mixed-use building consistent with the character of the neighborhood. will provide adequate light, air and open space, and really is consistent with the master plan vision and goals to provide unique, attractive and high-quality residential areas that will serve existing residents and attract new residents with a wide range of housing lifestyle choices, as well as is adaptively reusing, encouraging the adaptive reuse of an obsolete building. So really, I believe that the, the requested variances here, that D1 and the, the C variance for the curb cut, that the proofs have been met in both the positive and the negative criteria. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, so, yeah, Mr. Chairman, that, that completes our, our presentation. As noted, our, our traffic engineer is here, he did prepare a report. So in the event any, there are any traffic questions, he can be promoted and answer those as well.
Okay, well, I'll just ask the board first, I mean, does anyone want to hear from the traffic engineer? Think they have questions? Okay.
Yeah.
We'll see. At this time, does anyone from the board have any general questions?
Mr. Chairman, may I say, I just wanted to know, since part of his properties are on Kennedy Boulevard, or has referred to Kennedy Boulevard an awful lot, was anything had to go through the county work organizations about this? And also, the driveway, is that on the Boulevard or is that on Stevens Avenue?
So, yeah, the driveway is on Stevens Avenue, and we have been in discussions with the Hudson County Planning Board for a determination whether or not this is exempt, because it has a Stevens Avenue address and the driveway is on Stevens Avenue, or if they require us to present the site plan to the county planning board, we will.
Okay, now, one other thing, Mr. Harrington. I'm sorry, I lost my track of thought, maybe I could come back if anybody else has the question.
I think we were, I think we were losing you, I, I only, you, you were cutting out, I don't know if, if anyone else had that issue.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I said there was one other thing, but it can't come to my mind at the moment. If anybody else has questions, I'll come back to it. If that was heard.
Yeah.
Right, we did.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I can't to my mind, if I may. I was just wondering, I know they said about a lot of the things with the historical preservation, and that they were working with them, but was the main concern that the historical preservation, were they attended to, or was there anything else that was not mentioned with Mr. Jeffrey's report?
I believe we're addressing all, all the comments that Mr. Reden presented to us, how to, how to treat it and how to restore the building.
And he was agreeable with what you've been doing with him?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Commissioner McCormick. Anyone else from the board have any questions?
I, I, I have a, a quick one. The commercial use proposed is office, commercial, which is fine, which is, which is great. But going forward, will there be any opportunity to change that commercial use? Or is that commercial use locked in?
That's, that's locked in, we're asking for permission from this board to have the office use. If they wanted to change that, they'd have to come back to this board.
Thank you.
I just want to ask about the parking, I just skipped that, how many bookings this are there? And how many of them would be for the resident, and how many would be for the offices and the customers?
Was 11 parking spaces, they're kind of blended together, so, you know, the residents can use, you know, three of them if they have cars. The, the remainder of the parking lot would be used by the office employees during the day, and then when they leave at night, it's open. So, you know, conceivably, the, you know, residents could, could, you know, use the rest of the spaces during the night. It's kind of a, a, a shared parking lot.
Mr. Harrington, I had a question, I mean, I, I think it's awesome that they want to put office, commercial space in this location, but any particular reason why? It seems like an unusual choice for this location and, and like the features of the space.
Well, I mean, my client specifically, this is for, for him and his, his office space. He, he had space on, office space on Mallory Avenue, on his, his company, it's actually Greenie Contracting, they are Jersey City based office, they wanted to keep it in Jersey City. This is, you know, this is kind of, he's been looking for new office space for the last couple of years, and he looked at this and kind of a unique kind of, kind of thing, you know, vibe, if you will, to convert it to, to office space. It's on, it's on Kennedy Boulevard, so the access is, is pretty good for his employees, whether they're driving or, or taking a bus. So it actually checked a lot of boxes, and that's, that's why he was looking at it for that purpose.
Okay, that's great. Thanks, any, anyone else have questions at this time? Lindsay, is there anyone from the public?
Let's see, oh, I see one hand raised, Philip Carrington. I'm going to once again.
Ahmed, do you want to be the timekeeper?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay, Philip, you should be able to turn on your camera and audio in just a moment. There we go. Hey, Philip, we promoted you to panelist, so you should be able to turn your video on.
Good evening, am I being heard?
Yes.
Yes. And now we can see you.
May I speak?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Raise your right hand, Mr. Carrington, to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
To the best of my knowledge, it is the truth.
And could you state and spell your full name and provide your address?
My first name is Philip, P H I L I P, my last name is Carrington, not Harrington, C A R R I N G T O N. I live at 145 Stevens Avenue.
Thank you.
My concerns are particularly the curb cut, and if I read the plan correctly, the extension of the the driveway for the parking. However, in the introduction, I think her name is Ms. Washell, there was a lot of interest or focus on the properties on Kennedy Boulevard. I haven't heard much speaking of what's on Stevens Avenue, and the building is on Stevens Avenue. For example, on the north side where they are, they are two-family houses with parking. On the south side, there's a string of townhouses with no parking, and I thought it would should be taken into consideration. Secondly, I'm not, I haven't heard them speak anything of soil testing for any kind of mediation or if there was any contamination in that soil. Secondly, thirdly, in the parking lot, I haven't heard anything or any speaking in terms of drainage, the water going to drain on Stevens Avenue or drain on the Boulevard. Now, back to the, to the curb cut and the variance, I'm opposing the variance, because again, if I look at the plan, they are asking to take up more space on Stevens Avenue to enter the parking lot, as opposed to putting that further towards the Boulevard, to bring it towards Stevens Avenue. What they're basically saying, according to my understanding, is that they wanted to control all of the parking in their parking lot and outside in front of their building, the entire front of their building, they would use that. And as long as they have the permission to use that side, the north side, obviously, then they will park the trucks on the south side. So they want to control both sides of the parking in front of their place, when there is hardly, there is no parking right now as it is for people such as myself. And I think that's extremely unfair. Why don't they cut a curb or a driveway on Kennedy Boulevard, now you have access to two.
One minute to go.
Excuse me?
One minute to go.
Okay, thirdly, if, if you are, if you are so concerned that your driveway or the entrance need to be broader, you can leave it the same way as it is, but you just expand the gates, in other words, put a bigger gate. But that park, but the space that you have as it is can be used. I was parking the bus in there, so I know, 50 school bus, I drove in and out. So you just need to expand the gate and not the driveway. If I understand it correctly, you're, you're asking for a variance to expand the driveway, which I think is unfair. You're trying to monopolize the entire parking, and that's wrong.
Thank you.
My time's up?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think we'll make sure that Mr. Harrington addresses those concerns. I think, you know, it's those three issues, was there anything else that, that there was? Well, I mean, Mr. Harrington, I don't know if you want to address those particular concerns and
Sure.
I mean, it's official to have the traffic expert on, say, it sounds like some of the questions are about access, where, where it makes sense to access the parking lot.
Yeah, I mean, we, yeah, we can have him come up, but just real quick, I mean, it, with regard to the parking, we are, as noted by Mr. Lewis and Ms. Worstel, we are providing for parking for the residential units as well as the office. We're not asking for, and, and the curb cut, we're not asking to expand the curb cut. We are keeping it the way it is. So, you know, we have asked for a variance because we're changing the use, because in the R1 zone, the maximum curb cut is 10 feet for predominantly, you know, residential uses, you know. But that curb cut is 18 feet, we're not changing it, so we're not expanding that. And as far as the, you know, we're not controlling any parking on, on the street in front of us, we, that, that's, you know, it is, it is what it is, we don't have any rights to, to the parking on, on the street before or after this project in the event it's approved. As far as environmental, I mean, the property, my, my client closed on it. There's no environmental, you know, as far as, as far as, you know, his due diligence showed, so that's fine. And then, I mean, the drainage, I don't, I don't know if Jeff, I'm not sure if he can address that or not, but it's, it's that, you know, we are, we're providing, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna make the, and we're not ma- the parking areas, as Jeff pointed out, we're creating new lawn area next to Stevens Avenue, so although the, the parking lot is getting deeper towards, you know, what is, is that towards the north? We are providing more lawn area next to Stevens Place, so that, you know, that would certainly help the drainage. And, you know, I know my, my client, that's their business, they're, you know, they, they create, you know, pipes and drains all over Jersey City. So I would assume, you know, they're gonna make sure that this, this works. So with that said, I'll ask, you know, Lee to address why, you know, this wouldn't work for a curb cut on, on Kennedy Boulevard, if you, if you could, because I, I mean, I don't think the, the county would, would even consider that, but I'll leave it up to Lee.
Hey, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state and spell your full name.
Lee, middle initial D, isn't Daniel, Klein, K L E I N.
Thank you.
And Mr. Klein's been accepted as an expert in traffic engineering by this board in the past.
Thank you, my license and my certifications are still current.
Accept your qualifications, thank you.
Thank you. As far as access goes, typically, a, a use like this, you would want to put it on the local street, Stevens Avenue, as opposed to the county road. This driveway has been here for many years, the church, when it was active, had traffic coming in and out of it. I don't, I didn't do any, any kind of a research background or anything on that, but typically, you would like to see traffic come out to Stevens and then get to Kennedy, and then at Kennedy, they can make their turns. So I think it's the hierarchy of roads and things like that, you would put the driveway on Stevens. Anything else?
And if I, if I could add, on the drainage, you know, I've been advised, we, the, the stormwater is, is directed towards the landscaping areas away from the driveway entrance, and we do have, we do have some drains within the driveway area to capture that.
Okay. Was there, was there anything else that, that you wanted to address in response to those comments that were raised by Mr. Carrington?
No, I, I think, I think I've addressed them.
Okay. Lindsay, is there, are there any other public comments? I kind of was thinking that was it.
I don't see any other, I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, then we're going to close the public portion of the application. Does anyone else from the board have any questions or comments at this time, or staff? Cameron, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I've got my standards spiel.
I'll make it quick then, Cameron.
All right. Oh, I'm gonna ask that the applicant's attorney agreed to the conditions stated in the planning staff report, omitting, I look like I'm evil right now, because this, sorry. Omitting condition number four. There is no water retention system on this site, that was a mistake on my part. So, Mr. Harrington, does your client agree to the conditions stated in the staff report, omitting condition number four?
Yes, we do, would.
Okay, and then, you know, I'm unfortunately saddened to see on the plans that the existing tree facing the east side, oh, sorry, west side of the property has been removed, that was supposed to stay, seems to be standard protocol for developers to just chop down existing trees. I'm gonna ask if they plant a new tree there. So we're gonna add that as a 13th condition.
That would be acceptable.
All right, planning staff is, you know, satisfied with the testimony that their professional planner has given regarding the D variance and the curb cut there here. You know, we see this all the time in Jersey City, we've got a lot of churches that are over 100 years old. A lot of them, unfortunately and sadly, eventually require demolition by neglect. And, you know, personally, this is a church I bike by a lot and always, you know, I think it captivates your imagination with just the appearance of it, you know. And it's, it's certainly, you know. It, it makes the department happy to see that it's gonna go to use, and then also that it's gonna bring jobs to Jersey City, which then in turn might bring, you know, residents and taxpayers and families. So the planning department's recommending approval on this application with the conditions.
Thanks, Cameron, does anyone?
And, and Cameron, I'm, I'm assuming that the applicant would work with staff to, on the, you know, the, the tree selection, the tree pit selection, all of, all of that stuff, that would be incorporated into that additional requirement.
Yeah, on the final signature plans, you know, we'll make sure it's not a tree of heaven.
Okay, and, and we'll work with, with Cameron on the location, so it's not too close to the pavement, so that it has enough area to, to grow.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Kate, anyone else have questions at this time?
I'd like to make a motion on Z21007 for approval with the staff conditions, omitting the number that was stated.
Second, thank you. Start with Commissioner Patel.
Yes.
All right, then Commissioner Green?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Arugio?
Yes.
Right. So we got Commissioner McCormick?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Vice Chair Donnelly?
Yes, Mr. Harrington had me at Little Castle. And, and thank you for just doing a careful and coordinated restoration and not trying to stick a bunch of stories on top of it. I appreciate it, it's, it's, it's a beautiful plan. and not trying to stick a bunch of stories on top of it. I appreciate it. It's 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 a beautiful plan.
And Chairman Jacobs.
Yes. We like this project a lot. I think this is awesome that we're, this was thoughtful. Commercial space in this neighborhood, this location. Restoring, you know, historic structure that looks pretty cool. So great job and good luck with the project.
Mr. Harrington, isn't isn't this the project that the building was sold on Mallory Avenue and they're building something down there, so they need a new space. So I'm glad that they got into an area that is accessible to a lot of the county roads and the city streets.
That's correct.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Great.
Great.
Thank you, everyone. Good luck.
We just, we just beat the deadline for the night.
No, you're overloaded.
No, it's thirteen minutes over.
Now, now we have resolutions to memorialize.
Does Bridget need a break?
No.
I don't think.
Going down. Let's go.
The first two resolutions to memorialize, the hearings were on May thirteenth. Present on May thirteenth were Acting Chair Donnelly, Commissioners Arroyo, Green, Patel, Brown and McCormick. The first resolution to memorialize is Z twenty-one dash zero one eight. The applicant was Stephanie Demanuel. It was a C variance at one fourteen Waverly Street. That passed six in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that.
Aye.
Aye.
The second one also, May thirteenth, same six commissioners, was Z twenty dash zero four six. Grove Street Hub LLC, a minor site plan approval with a D variance. The address was two thirty, Fourth Street. That also passed six in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that. And the next few to memorialize, the next four actually occurred on May seventh. Present on May twenty-seventh were Chairman Jacobs, Commissioners Donnelly, Shadid, McCormick, Arroyo, Patel and Green. The first case is Z twenty dash zero five one. The applicant was twenty-two dash twenty-four Bergen Avenue LLC. Preliminary and minor minor, I'm sorry, preliminary and final major site plan approval with a C and D variance. The address again was twenty-two dash twenty-four Bergen. That passed seven in favor, none opposed. All in favor of approving that.
Aye.
The next one was Z nineteen dash zero six nine. The applicant was N I V I D T A comma Inc. Preliminary and final major site plan approval with a C and D variance. The address was ninety-one dash ninety-three Patterson Street. That application was approved, five in favor, two opposed. And the two opposed were Chairman Jacobs and Commissioner Donnelly. All in favor of memorializing that.
Aye.
The next was two actual applications for the same property. One ninety-one dash two oh one Summit Avenue or sixty-two dash sixty-four Storms. The first case was Z twenty dash zero zero forty-one. That was the subdivision for that 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 application. I think I said the applicant's name, one ninety-nine Summit Avenue LLC. In any event, that subdivision was approved, seven in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that.
Aye.
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 And the next case, Z twenty dash zero forty-two. Again, the same applicant, one ninety-nine Summit Avenue, the same address. This was the companion case. This was the site plan. The preliminary and final might major site plan approval with C and D variances for that property. That passed seven in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that is
Aye.
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 And the last matter was heard on June tenth. Present that evening with Chairperson Jacobs, Commissioners McCormick, Shadid, Patel and Green. This case was Z twenty dash zero nine three Visionary One LLC. That was a C variance for twenty-six Manhattan Avenue and that was approved, five in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that.
Right.
Aye.
Aye.
So that ends it.
Okay.
Okay.
Did we want to do one forty-four Bergen or no? Because it was just heard tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. I pushed that to the side. I did read that. One forty-four Bergen Avenue, the case we just heard.
Yeah, we would just need to update the last sheet to reflect who's present. And there were six in favor and one opposed tonight.
Right. Correct that, yeah. Oh, I don't have a last sheet here. So that was the case we just heard, the the site plan amendment.
Correct.
Z. Yeah, so that's that, I just have to, I don't have the 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 sheet for the account. I'll have to just correct it when I get it tomorrow. So that was pass six in favor, one opposed. So we'll memorialize that as well.
I'm sure we do.
Yes.
Aye.
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 So that doesn't, is it correct?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Oh, no, it's okay.
So I guess we make a motion to close and we can go.
Motion to close.
Great. Enjoy the sunset, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Hi, good night.
Have a safe holiday, everyone.
Try and catch the strawberry moon.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know what that is.